Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call the boarder, the monthly meeting for the White Lake Library Board Trustees at six forty-five. On Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. And we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of this nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call President Jennifer Schultz here, Vice President Richard McBlue.
Here.
Secretary Karen Lyons here, Treasurer Wendellin Newton.
Here.
Trustee Carrie Francis.
Here.
And Director Abel Stevenson and Assistant Director Amy Rosenhardt in attendance. I'll just make a note there in the public here today. And there are no presentations today. Can I get someone to approve them?
The agenda.
The, where did that go? Oh. Let's approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second it or you? We didn't have, or it didn't have it. She got permission.
One votes in favor.
Hi.
Or I. I anticipated what's.
Yeah. Raise my hand because I'm reading.
Not bad. Okay, so then I can go back to the approval of the minutes.
Also move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
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 Or yes votes. Right?
We're all here.
So, um, we go to the officer reports. I would just like to say. Happy twenty-fifth anniversary here at the libraries. Amy, we have, you've outrived all of us as far as how many directors you've worked with. I've only worked with three and you said five, so. Uh, we just thank you for all that you've been doing and how you've progressed along. And also I would like to announce that my daughter is a combat trained. I opened it up so I could tell you and I lost the page. She is, she's a marks, a CMC, combat marksmanship coach. And she's also got the rank of double expert shooter. So she's not only.
Well.
She's a double expert.
Wow.
And just as a side that I know she'll never see this, she almost dropped out of boot camp because she didn't want to fire her weapon. And so if it hadn't been for a CMC who partnered up with her, she may have dropped out during boot camp. And so now she's really excited about it. She's can shoot a pistol now and all that other stuff, so.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations. She's one of the top finalists for Marine of the Month. So I'm not quite sure what that all takes, other than she gets to serve on a board for a number of months to give all kinds of feedback and be involved in.
What's great on her.
So yeah, she's really big on recruiting and wants to give feedback. So I just wanted to brag on my daughter. So it can be broadcast.
Very good.
So thank you for listening.
Tell her.
I, and she would say, you're worth it.
Oh, very nice.
That's her favorite comeback.
Very nice.
Thank you for appreciating her. All right, Vice President Rich.
No report.
None?
No.
And that brings us to you.
Um, none, I will, oh, I, that is not true.
That's not true.
That is absolutely not true. Um, hopefully everybody took time to look at the packet. And if there's any questions, um, the balance fund sheet, we actually don't have any investments that we need to discuss this month. Or for the next several months, as a matter of fact. To Friday, and we've already worked with Flagstar to move that to the checking account and that was approved in January. Okay, so, um, and if there are no, and then I had one question on the aging report. And, and I thought we had taken care of it because we had something that was over ninety days. I actually remembered asking Heather about it and she said, we actually hadn't gotten the invoice. And then, um, but we've already paid it. Okay, so, so it was paid in March.
It's the clock, it's the second half of the clock.
Yes, okay, so we're all set with that. So if there's any other questions on the budget. Or on, um. The cash disbursement for February. If not, then I make a motion to accept the bills for payment.
I'll second that. On favors?
Alright, guys.
Yes. Okay. So. Before you start, is there the shareholder? So this shareholder as well as some share items. So the laser engraver came in.
Oh, wow.
Uh, we're just kind of playing around, uh, so we'll look hard over.
Nice.
This is actually, uh, something that we did back at Novi, but I said, why don't we give it a try here? Got to work on it a little bit, but maintenance. Which is a great way to advertise the fact that we've got a laser engraver.
Oh, yeah.
To do our own things.
Good.
Um, so we're playing on that. Um, I did, as Jen suggested, uh, do a calendar version of events. So it's, it's on, they're kind of playing with it, but it'll show you everything for that month, including copies where they're, where they are. It's a little tricky to get them on there. However, another thing I can give you is a list version as well.
Okay.
Which kind of gives you a little bit more detail.
Okay.
Like if, when I say Vicki, like which one?
Well, it's the one right, you had the address on there.
I did. Yep. But, um, so, yeah.
But the, the latest one, the first one you sent us is at a Zoom meeting or a Google meeting?
Uh, the Vicki, no, and you know.
No, the one, not the Vicki, the other one.
The friendship circle?
There wasn't, there was one of them.
And what's the one today? That was the friendship circle. No, I, and what's odd about that is I don't know why there was a video portion on that. Like, cause I.
That was very nice.
The finance committee meetings are on here and actually there is a copy that's going to be at the township offices, which would be a good chance because we're probably going to talk about what's coming next. So, and just to let you know, uh, if you would like to come to the breakfast portion, the first portion of our service day. I am the, uh, the township supervisor and the township clerk, who will be doing a presentation on what's going to be next door so that we are fully able to.
And what day is that?
That is going to be Monday, May sixth, and that would be around nine fifteen.
I will not be here.
So then you might want to come to the copy room. I'm sure they're going to.
Yes, okay.
Talk a little bit about that. Um, speaking of that, I did receive, um, from the state of Michigan, their water resources division just letting us know that the township had applied for a permit to do some of their wetland work. And we. You can look at, and so it was just not, just some things. Um, and then what we did at our blood drive. That's it for your report? It's not sure. It's just. It can't be done now. Um, no, yeah, so, uh, we filmed an interview with, um, getting kind of my Oprah Winfrey thing going there in front of the fireplace. You're going to see a, um. Uh, an interview style video to promote our spring market, which is a partnership with the Huron Valley Council for the Arts. Um, obviously the new clock was installed and, um. Busy, uh, for board members, uh, multiple webinars, copies in attendance. So yay, thank you. Lots of good work by the circulation services, including some professional development and working hard to get our backpacks, prep our backpacks so that they got out on time, which we really wanted to. So they did a great job. Kudos to them on that one. Uh, social media and stats and marketing look like they're going well. We received another five star comment, went into use the computer and printer, got in and out quick. Right. Um, director connections for myself. I attended an onsite DSLR team meeting over at the Westland Library. So just a nice opportunity to get out and, um. See a different library, see what they have and connect with other directors. Um, as well as library Michigan new directors, uh, getting trained on our new, uh, program calendar. So I'm not quite, uh, on top of it as Emily, but I plan to get there. So for my own purposes. She did send you, uh, the video on how to do that, so. That, uh, getting out my copies myself, talking us up. Still doing my cohort. That's a year-long, uh, professional development. Lots of convenient board meetings. Facilities, uh, we did, as I mentioned before, sustained some wind damage to that garbage enclosure. Uh, we had it welded in six spots, uh, actually five, we have one more to go. And then the trucks will be reinstalled and we also have to work on the wheels and the chain that holds the thing open when the garbage comes. The garbage people. Hold it too far and it snapped. So that's, another thing we're telling what on that whole area, we're trying to make that much easier and friendlier to get in and out of, because right now it's a little bit of a. A hot mess. Uh, if you noticed, uh, if you came to the book sale, the friends wishlist, the friends wanted it changed to friends contribution list. Um, I agree. I think it makes much more sense. It doesn't say this is what we're wishing for. It says this is what that they are giving us. So that looked a lot better. They are also hosting a raffle at the spring art market, uh, for locally sponsored baskets and winning tickets will be at the June, hold of the June book sales. So you don't want to miss that. That memorandum of understanding is all set. It is stored in the administrative office and has been shared with the friends executive board. See their art wall. They are going to be looking for more submissions. Uh, they are confirmed through May, but we'll need some more. And last but not least with them, they earn just under seven thousand dollars.
That's amazing. That's fabulous.
There were so many people here. Some huge kudos.
Yeah, just to get it over that, just, right. That is, that's fabulous.
Uh, we received a nice donation from a patron, um, Blu-rays and a series, and so that was very nice. Still a lot of reading going on. And, um, a lot of staff doing a little bit more professional development as they can and, um, chairing committees. Emily is going to be attending Leadership Academy. Uh, this is a wonderful opportunity. It's something that I was very happy to do years ago. I, it is. Gives a lot of development, a lot of insight to what it's like to be a library leader and to build on that. So very happy for her. Uh, Emily and Amy and I will be going next week to PLA. Uh, so that's going on there. We had one of our most successful book displays with Blind Date with a Book. If you didn't have a chance to see that or know what that's all about, a book is kind of wrapped, so you can't see what it is and a little short fun blurb is put on the cover. And it's kind of like speed dating. Look and read it. Maybe I want this. You grab it, you take it, take a chance. So that was very successful. People really enjoyed that.
When are you going to, you're going next week?
Yeah.
When is it?
Tuesday, it's Wednesday through Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We're leaving Tuesday.
So we won't be doing. We probably won't be sending checks then.
You'd still be able to sign checks.
How are you going to get, how are you going to get them uploaded?
I can still deposit it there.
You're going to do it while you're up there. Okay. All right. Just checking.
All set like that. Um. So summer reading planning is in full swing. Prices have been picked, summary and promos being filmed. We're getting ready for that. Uh, we purchased a button maker, like buttons. Those teens love them. So breaker for giveaways. Um, and, uh.
So, so you purchased a button maker for, is that for the youth and teens?
I mean, it can be for anything, anything at all, any type of buttons that people like to make.
So anybody can use it.
Right now we're just with staff and getting it for more opt-in giveaway.
Okay, because I was just thinking that would be something that I could use, the tail wagging tutor people could use.
Exactly.
Maybe I'll talk to Emily.
The dogs.
Yeah, because I'm, I've done my own, um, bookmarks with his face, you know, with him in the library. Um, but. You know, some of the kids are repeats and I'm like, can't keep, keep giving them bookmarks and stickers, but it would be, you know, maybe like, you know, I'm a number one reader or something.
Because I do think that did come up with the duck, which that was one of the things we thought it was the dogs.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, I like that.
Um, and actually in my, uh, my best session, we had a button maker and we did actually prepackage the little kits together so that people could come in, they could purchase the kit for a cheap amount. And then make their own one through the machine.
Perfect.
Now we're just getting staff used to it and so that might be a future item. Okay, landscape and a small amount of spring training has begun and then the snow king. But we'll get back to that. Uh, staff anniversaries, again, big kudos to our own Amy, uh, Kim, our head of cert, it's twenty-three years. Um, so she's up there too, and Mallory is three. Um, our cameras have been installed, our laser engraver, as I mentioned, arrived and we did purchase some map converter cords so that if we have presenters that have bring a Mac style laptop, we can have markers for that.
Right.
Thank you very much. That was good. Um, how much, oh, um, if you look at stats, um, they seem like they're, they're doing okay. I will. So those seem to be going well.
I had a quick question about stats and cards in general. I, I know we have a new card registration. Do we have a total number of patrol cars that are active anywhere?
I can get one.
I'd love to be able to see that and hear that.
We looked at that not, not that long ago. It seemed like, because it was a very high percentage of the township.
It was, it was, uh. Yeah, it was, it was, it was a little bit more than thirty percent of the township. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I thought Heather had said that they had. I thought that it, she felt it was really up to date.
Yeah.
Had she done a lot of purging and.
I think Tia Lam did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we discussed it. That'd be nice to know.
I asked rather selfishly because I got in a discussion with someone on social media who said that.
Nobody.
There's no, there's no use of lying.
Yeah.
Did you see it?
I saw it, but I didn't comment because you can't.
Right, right.
That is, that's what our line when we pull in the parking lot is always told, yeah, nobody uses libraries. It's why there's so many cars here.
Well, as I pointed out, number of cars does not use, see that they're dropping off kids and people are doing things via the internet.
Well, when we have almost six thousand people go through the door in a month.
Yeah. Yeah, when you look at the circulation numbers and.
Yeah, and, and the circulation numbers, you've got twenty-four thousand items that have gone through circulation. It's not, not, it's, it's, the library is being used by somebody.
Yeah. Yeah, lots of some of those.
Yes, it's nine thousand four hundred fifty-four car, of course.
Yeah. That's great.
Seventy-two thousand eighty-three visits. This is for twenty twenty-three. I can come to board the year review.
If you don't mind, that'd be awesome.
I wouldn't mind seeing that also. Actually, that could be something, do you post that? Oh. It was posted at the end of the year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It could be posted again. Could remind people.
Okay, the, um, just with the stats, the, uh, one of the things I was looking at, the, um, drive up window, I thought. It looked, uh, it just looked a little low to me, considering, uh, the COVID test kits that get picked up. And so we adjusted that to include, rather than keep that separate, we included that in because a drive up is a drive up is a drive up, so.
It wasn't being included before?
No, it doesn't, so it doesn't, let's get that in there.
Yeah, I just assumed anything that people would access the drive through would be counted.
Yeah, so then.
Yeah. Because I saw that and I went, oh, look at that.
Yeah, so that's what that is.
So that's why it went from twelve to forty-five?
Right.
Right.
You always have to ask, what does one mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
So. When are you reporting for the?
Yes, I will report for the finance committee. Um, then we met this month and we'll meet again. We meet every month, like a third Wednesday of the month. Um, and Carrie has now joined us, so it's, um, we've got a, you know, full house for our finance committee, which is great. Um. The only thing I really want to discuss today is the fact that, um. Chase, I had asked, well, and we'd had it in the board minutes, that, um. The, the two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar CD that we have, that it, that, that plus interest when it expired in February get rolled over, um, to a new CD. And they did roll the principal over and they put the, um, and they put the interest in our checking account, which we had not asked them to do. Um, so instead of it sitting there and that amount is sixty-two hundred and six, six thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. And instead of it sitting in that account that does nothing and makes no money, I'm, um, I'm proposing that we have Joe cut a check for that sixty-two forty. I'll get it right, sixty-two forty-eight, forty-four cents.
Okay.
I'm going to propose that he cuts a check. That will give us an opportunity to make sure that positive pay works in Chase again. We've done it, we've only done it once. We've done one test. By having Joe cut a second check and from Chase, it will give us an opportunity to make sure that, um, our positive pay is still. Up and running correctly. So, um, April will have to do that input, but it also, it's just another test because we haven't tested it in probably ten or eleven months. That, that checking account and everything's lined up that should work. So this will give an opportunity to do that and we'll have that check sent to, well, we'll, um, cut the check and then we'll deposit it at Flagstar checking.
We've got to check two White Lake touch.
Yes, yes. For the interest that's from that Chase CD and it will also, it just allows us to give a test as well, so. And, and, and I think that that will be a good test and it also will keep us from having another seventy-two hundred dollars just sitting doing nothing, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to have a check cut to the White Lake Touch of Library in the amount of six thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
From the, from the Chase checking account. And then, um. So then I looked at today's, um. Um, Flagstar account and with the CD that is expiring, um, uh, it's maturing on Friday, we'll have just slightly over a million dollars in the checking account. We don't have any other CDs that are coming due until August, but that, that money will cover us well into September. So we should be fine. So it'll be nice for, um, the next few months that you will be, I won't be, I won't be bugging you to approve a CD move. Okay, next month's not due till August. Okay, that's it. So.
Have you reported, I am reporting.
First, we teach you the planning committee.
I am here. Okay, so we met last week. Um, and some of the things that we went over, um. We examined improvements to the current goals document. One of them was adding a tab that explains kind of what certain things were. An example of that was during. The book sale, Oakland eighty was out there and nobody seemed to know what they were and everybody was asking and stuff. So things like, what is Oakland eighty? Because I didn't know until I talked to them. Um, and then we're looking into creating a tab for each strategy goal or perhaps all for like year one goals, so that we're looking.
Okay.
And then, um, it was suggested that we expand the current year and review infographic to include a report on strategic plan accomplishments. So not just what we've got, but what we've accomplished. And this would also include a celebration of staff work towards these goals. And during our next meeting, we will review the scene, if the ending date for our tech sticks is on track, what we need to adjust them. And if any of the techniques need to be moved to a different year, and if anything has arisen that we need to call for change.
I, yes, I, it's great. I, I do have, um. A comment though. I like that, um, the items that are newer and red. Um. I, and I don't know if we can do exact dates, but it would be nice to see these new things have some kind of date with them so we understand where they're, where they started. And, you know, um, so for example, you know, Mallory proposed a new youth programming series, even if it just said March of twenty twenty-four, it's in February twenty twenty-four. We, you know, so.
If it happened on the twelve, I could do three twelve and that would show March twelve.
Yeah, so I don't care if it really has the exact date, but if it has the month and year, it, since this is a three-year strategy, it would give us an idea. Because this is going to roll off and it's not going to be red anymore, you know, in a couple, like a month or so. Um, and I don't know what the timeline is when it's no longer listed as a new item, but a date would really be helpful so that it's just better tracking.
Yeah.
We also talked about. You know, if this is a three-year list of, of things, it's one item on, on three pages. You really want, like, what's happening? New until you kind of, we want to like archive so that it's in the, it's in the file, but the, we don't, but we're talking about. Major, major accomplishments and new, new activity versus having every. Uh, thing that's, you know, something happened this month, so great, here's what it is, but next month, maybe that isn't so important to continue to have in the list. So you want to, you know. Have some brevity, uh, to bring clarity.
So it doesn't get way too long.
Right.
Yeah, but also have it, you know, not erase it, right, to leave it in the history, but have a, you know.
Not trying to find things.
Mm-hmm.
And like the note said, I'm going to be working and kind of playing around with some different things and I may bring you a couple of different options, you know, next month or the next couple of months and find something that kind of works here. But I agree, this will just continue with.
It will.
And we need quarterly.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we don't need to get it.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, and the dates I think would be really helpful. Okay. But the red highlight is great too, because it's really, really clear. Yes.
Policy committee, right? Next.
Policy's next.
Okay, so we met on the nineteenth, uh, initially reviewed the meeting room policy. And there's a couple of areas that we need to work on yet, but eventually an attorney will review that. Um, we also sent the personnel manual to the attorney for review. As well as the current suggested time off policies, which we'd gone over. We also requested from the attorney if they have any examples for consolidated time off policies that consolidate vacation time, PTO, take time, all of that into one. As well, we sent the collection development request for reconsideration policies to the attorney for review and we requested the data privacy and data retention policies from the attorney. So that's basically where we stand.
We just get an email from the, one of the attorneys today and he did send us an example of a consolidated time off policy for us to look at. Uh, to see if that's the way we want to go. He did say there is some outstanding law out there that, um.
Yeah.
We'd have to be aware of, um, but that's okay, because we would just. Consult with him when they turn.
Isn't that in the appellate court right now?
Yeah.
So I think, okay, do we finalize something new? Well, there's an outstanding time off policy in the appellate court. time off policy in the appellate court?
So he's.
I thought I'd go out and read what the appellate court policy was about.
We can probably talk about.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that, so.
Did you look at it already?
I have not, no.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Next up is building committee. And we met in person and reviewed the additional information on door pops, which we'll be talking some more about after this. Excuse me. We reviewed projects budgeted for this year and then projects that are part of strategic plan to be investigated and general project ideas. And then we also did an internal building tour, took a look at some of these locations of these projects to gather more ideas and review some of the needs. And then April has also prepared a spreadsheet to track progress, meeting notes, items to accomplish before each meeting for each project. And we'll meet again on Monday, April eighth.
So just to give you a couple of things, some more things that would be on that spreadsheet as examples, so acoustic improvement in the idea lab, some additional slots, the after hour lockers, generator, digital sign upgrade, assessing the lifespan, condition, and future cost of building components. And I've already received some spreadsheet examples on that. Some outside shelving outside of the idea lab, painting, getting a crosswalk where the stop sign is painted, re-sanding the patios, the donor tree, of course, and some future ideas as well. It's not inclusive.
And are those prioritized?
They are prioritized based on whether they are budgeted, strategic, strategic plan first.
Okay.
Because they obviously have to be. Because money's been allotted.
Can you add in a plaque? To commemorate the building itself? Yeah, that's been on ours for a long time.
And it never got set up.
Who was on the committee, who did the funding, you know, all of that. We.
You got to talk to him.
Yeah.
He hasn't responded back as to whether he's coming this week or not.
Okay.
But let's talk to him because he gave us that example, so.
Yeah.
No, it's on there.
We'll bring it to the board. Alrighty, so we have no new business right now. I think the other thing, I'm sorry to backtrack, the other thing on the building committee is that we're looking for suggestions for some kind of expert advisor who would not have to come to every, but would be a resource to pull on for the, how much does a roof cost? And did we miss anything? And you know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of people in mind. I need to see if they actually live in White Lake that we've used for other entities.
Okay. And so, and if anybody else has somebody, an architect, a contractor, you know, any of that kind of background. Yeah, civil engineer. Anybody with that kind of background, even a, a may, someone who does building maintenance. Facility, you know, just, we can have more than one. We're just looking for input, making sure we're not missing anything.
I, I like the perspective of building maintenance because that would be sort of an overall view of, you know, general items perhaps, as part of, as one person, as possibly.
It might even help to talk to, if they've got people like this at other libraries, you know, to see what their background is, because you had, you've got spreadsheets from other libraries and then like we start.
Yeah, and I also got one for Boyett, so.
Okay.
Some things that we can start.
I do a lot of our maintenance right now, or they did the other building. Yeah, I see them in my chest.
Okay. There was a gentleman I just met yesterday that said that he, they've only been in this area for two years. They've lived in Traverse City. He's retired. He retired from Saint Joseph Parish in Traverse City as the facilities manager, which is also the facilities manager of the winery there. I didn't know a church owned, they owned.
They're making their own wine?
I think they, I think they're, I think they're part owners of Chantot Chantel or they're involved in that. And he, and he said, and if I understood him right, because he said that he was going to bring back some wine, but he was the facilities manager and he's now retired. So it, he, and it might be worth talking to him about.
Good idea.
I'm going to turn Rich on to it. So if you guys want to text their information or email their information to Karen, then she can be the owner of list for now, that we can get contact information and talk to people. Thank you, Carrie.
Sure, taking on that responsibility. Alrighty, so we're back to old business. We got a little bit of innovation
I don't think we have all the questions answered yet. I think we got some more information. Yeah. I assume you would leave this discussion.
Sure, so building committee met and I provided them the same items that were provided in the or package. Basically, what it's giving you is the service charge that was on the ADT one has been waived.
That was like a hundred.
It was a hundred and sixty dollars, forty-six cents a month.
Yeah. Okay, when I read that document, it just said this, it's the quote without it. Did he ever say why they put it in there or why they?
Said it was an option and why it was put in there that way rather than.
And, but what would it have given, what would it have given us?
An extended warranty is basically what it is.
That hundred, that, that monthly service fee?
Yeah. It's an extended service warranty.
But how long's it? So what happens if something doesn't work with it?
You get the basic one, which is about a year.
And what, what the, the building committee think of it?
Drop the hundred and sixty.
If anything happens in a year, it's usually a big deal.
Yeah.
After that, it's just hopefully not a big deal. And then.
Add it on that hundred and sixty every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every month, so.
It's a lot of money.
Just, we would just have that money sitting aside for.
Well, that's a good point.
That's our money for making repairs or whatever it is.
And if, and how do you get new HEPA?
How do you get new HEPA?
Yeah, do, I mean.
That wouldn't have covered it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You know where I was going with that. Yeah, what, what do you, what else are you getting just besides an extended warranty? What do you get in that? A hundred and sixty?
A bill.
Okay, so if you get it, if you need more HEPA? You have to, you have to purchase them.
We had, I can say that we had ADT at Novi and I can't think of it up until maybe a year before I left, we didn't have really any problems with the product. So. The box kept working, it wasn't.
There's, there's no moving parts. I mean, there's really.
Right, right, unless somebody will put it through the washer.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. I probably have done that with.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just basically the RFID.
That's what I said, I washed mine, it worked just fine afterwards, so.
Yeah. It's not recommended, but spin, spin cycle, there's all sorts of things.
Everything else we've already seen, right?
Yeah. Verkhata gave a slightly updated version of theirs, but it's, I made all the questions that were asked and thanks, Juan, for sending those, were sent directly to each of them and you can see the answers for all of them. I will say with Verkhata, they, he actually had some references on there that were not core fobs, they refer their cameras. And so I kind of flushed, kind of figured that out and I only want references that are fobs.
Yeah.
They didn't really answer the question about escort software. They basically said.
No, they basically said no.
They basically said no, and it would be, they would, you know, update the software to be a open source. I have, oh, what could this intend to? I was not impressed with their answers. Okay. And basically it said too, if they went on a business, you know, like said, we probably won't, but we always when you're dealing with software, it would be worried about that. And you know, they said that, well, in account would help you migrate to someplace else, so I thought, well, if they went out of business next year and we paid for a year, we paid for, you know, like a three-year warranty on it, right? So I wasn't, I personally wasn't impressed with their answers.
So is there more information we need to make a decision?
Well, what did the building department committee think?
We thought we'd bring it to the board and see if they needed any more information to make a decision.
I thought you were going to give a recommendation.
Executive decision.
We're recommending you work with ADT because the price difference was what, less than three thousand dollars? About three thousand dollars?
Twenty-seven thousand, twenty-two or something like that.
Yeah.
It was though, that money was well spent in the operations and not having two different operations pointing fingers at each other.
Well, but there's two separate systems, they, they don't interact, so it's not like.
I know, but just having two different people working in a building and if there's questions, it tends to give them. You know, our question is, with version, do we want to go with, right? And we just, I recommend that we just go with the less expensive version.
Yeah, so it's about fifteen hundred dollars difference, fifteen. Yeah, it's about fifteen hundred dollars.
So is the committee in agreement that we recommend we use ADT and we go with the less expensive version?
Yes.
Yes, that's our recommendation.
Yes, well, any please?
Yeah.
That's what the building committee's for.
So then I need a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we go with ADT for this security system, including the door access control.
Well, second.
Our favor.
Hi.
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 Yes, I know.
For the one for the twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, because that's expensive.
You know, the more expensive ones.
It's the more expensive.
ADT's twenty.
No, no, ADT had two.
Two per head.
Yeah.
They had the Wi-Fi version, which was more expensive.
Which, oh.
Thirties.
Yeah. Oh, yes, right. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said that, I thought you meant that of the two that we were looking at today, the less expensive, okay. Okay, we're looking at the new one from ADT without the, without the monthly service fee.
Right, so without the Wi-Fi, yes.
Okay, so can Eric reinstated them so that it's correct into how which one we're getting?
Sure, can it be self-referential back to the committee's recommendation?
Sure.
Just so that we know that we have that, so make a motion to accept the ADT proposal for security system, including door access controls that is the lower priced of the two ADT solutions.
Yeah. Eight and three five twenty-four.
Data three five twenty twenty-four.
Three five.
I'll second that.
Read, read to me. Okay, thank you.
I will also state that I, I read through the in account, the, the Verkhata thing, you know, I, I write a lot of proposals and statements of work for the living. And I was astonished. And, yeah, well, if anybody checked it, they didn't care about checking that part of the.
That's sort of the impression I got, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, yeah, they said evaluation instead of valuation and things like that throughout the document, so.
We may be a little library and I got the impression they were being condescending. And, you know, because all these other big places use them, but it's still our, it's still our taxpayers' dollars. And, you know, and we have to take care of that.
Well, a number of those were security cameras only, not with the key fob.
And just, you know, in our, the interaction with Verkhata, nice people, but it's been pulling teeth to you know, as I showed you originally, which was more of a quote, to get them to even get to this point. One of the comments in the email was that we, we here, Amy and I had worked on this, have helped them to realize what it is they need to do. You're welcome.
Right.
But it's still not great.
No, no. And they probably have fine product.
Yeah. It's, I, I, I think, I think details matter.
And if you had problems getting them to come around to the proposal you were expecting, what could potentially go wrong when you actually potentially have a problem with the product?
Right.
Would you be able to get to anyone?
Yeah, there's a lot, there's, there's many more unknowns with that system, seems like, the ADT system.
Yeah, because I can help them. I can't help them with door pops.
Right.
All right, well, would someone like to make a motion at seven thirty-one?
Also, I'll move to close the meeting.
And I can. Listen, that was you, Carrie.
Me.
All right. Oh, well.